Good evening. I will now call the August 12, 2025 Bermuda Run Town Council Meeting to order. Remind everyone to please silence your phones. Do want to recognize we have a quorum. We have a full house up here. Welcome all. If you're able to, please join me in standing in Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
It is the intent of the town council to make solemn the proceedings of this meeting and the business brought before the governing board to offer the opportunity for a reflective moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Agenda item number four, Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics Statement. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Pursuant to North Carolina general statutes 168, 86, and 160D, 109, and the Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics policy adopted November 9, 2010, and further endorsed on August 9, 2022, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda, which will come before the town council for a vote at this meeting tonight. If so, please speak up and let the council know at this time before the agenda is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Item number five, adoption of the agenda. Council has had an opportunity to review the agenda. Are there any revisions, or do I have a motion?
Motion to move through, second.
Motion from Ernst, second by Tedder. Those in favor, show of hands. Five oh, thank you, council. Agenda item number six, approval of the July 8, 2025 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Council has had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any revisions, or do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Schaefer, second by Nelson. All in favor? Five oh, thank you, council. Agenda item number seven, presentation, Moxville and Greater Davie County Women's Club. Ms. Donna Powell and Ms. Linda Dorsett. In addition to inviting various county agencies to our council meetings to speak, I also want to invite organizations that contribute their time and their treasure to others. On such organization is Moxville, and I'm going to call it in shorthand, Moxville's Women's Club. But we will know that it's Moxville Women's Club, including the Greater Davie County. How about that? I know many of us have heard of this organization, so I reached out to the co-presidents. They were very gracious and agreeing to come speak tonight. As I asked them to come forward, I will remind the audience that council is welcome to ask questions of the presenters, but we will not take questions from the audience. That's our normal protocol. With that, whoever is the presenter, please come forward. Thank you.
We come together. Thank you for inviting us. We are very privileged. We divide the presidency up, and it's worked really well. So you'll be hearing about that. And I'm doing the history, she's doing local. In 1868, that was a long time ago, Jane Cunningham Crowley attempted to attend a dinner in an all-male press club honoring Charles Dickens. And she was a professional journalist. She was denied admittance because of her gender. So from that experience, she formed a women's club called Bombay, don't tell me, I don't know how she got that name, Cirrhosis. These clubs spread quickly across the United States. On April 24, 1890, Crowley called a convention of 63 clubs to ratify the Constitution, which formed the General Federation of Women's Clubs. The G, we call it the GFC, was formed by uniting smaller units like our country was established. So it's got three parts. So the purpose, we advocate because there is a need. We volunteer because we are needed. At the present time, GFWC has 60,000 members, 2,300 clubs, and clocked 6 million hours of community service. Damn. It's gone. Okay. This is where I wanted you. The GF, now we're talking about the GFWC in North Carolina. It was founded in 1902. The GFWC of North Carolina is the oldest organization in the state. There are 110 clubs in North Carolina. The purpose, unity and diversity, enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. Here are some of the projects you're seeing up above. The projects done by GFWC North Carolina, and I'll read them. Offers a four-year college scholarship named Sally Softall Cotton. She was one of the family ladies. It was the driving force behind the North Carolina Zoo. It provided over $70,000 to the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation Education Pavilion. They donated over $90,000 for North Carolina aquariums. And they also donated 17 million meals for food insecurity in North Carolina. Moxville Women's Club, this is about local. Moxville Women's Club was chartered in April 1962. There were 45 members. The first president was Betty Hall, or Mrs. William Hall, as the book stated, back then. One of the first projects was to work on getting a library in Moxville, and they did. Here are some pictures, what you're seeing. The first picture on the left is our greeters for our fundraiser in 2018. You see the lady second from the left with her sweater on. She has been in our club for over 50 years, and her name is Evelyn Daniel. The next picture you see, we come to this picture is because, we come to a picture that shows our club what they did in response to Hurricane Michael and Florence. These hurricanes decided to visit North Carolina at different times and close together. This caused floods. And our president at that time, Kristy Schaefer, she heard about this tale. She heard about this town, and it's Fairmont in the eastern part of the state, and that was in trouble. You see the ladies from our club next, who traveled there to take pots and pans and cots and blankets and drinking water and food and help. And the last picture pertains to this too. For several years, we have supported the Christmas program. You see that one, where you see them putting things in bags. And we have supported the Christmas program at Storehouse for Jesus. We interview parents about what their children want for Christmas. And also, our club donates Christmas bags filled with lotion, shampoo, jewelry, et cetera, everything, except the kitchen sink, for seniors in Storehouse. You see the picture up there of them stuffing the bags. The purpose is to protect all aspects of education toward bringing about a more literate society, to stress the importance of good citizenship and preserving our country's natural resources. And turn it over to her.
Okay. So Moxville Women's Club promotes programs in five areas to support our purpose. And we call these community service programs, or CSPs. And here you have the CSPs listed. Each of our members serves on one of these CSPs, and that's on a two-year rotation, so you get an opportunity to be on different committees. The committee selects a specific area of interest for the year and invite a speaker to come and tell us about that program. And then the committee also looks for ways that we can support that program, either financially and through service. So I just want to give you a little glimpse into those five CSPs. You're right there, stay right there. Okay, so the first one is arts and culture. Arts and culture promotes arts and cultural programs, including art and crafts and dance and drama and music and food. Last year, at our meeting, we heard from Susannah Lund, who is an art therapist and grief counselor at Trellis. And she talked to us about how art can be so beneficial for children, and sometimes for adults, in helping them to experience the loss of a loved one. And you know, I don't know about you, but I don't think about that. But she did a very interesting, and we made a contribution to that organization. This year, in contrast, we have invited Steve Frank, who is the new executive director of the Davie County Arts Council, to speak to us. And he is coming to speak to us in October about the changes in the council and how we might be involved. And I just learned tonight that the CSP chairs who contacted Steve were contacted by Steve to attend their planning meeting last week with their board. I thought that was really nice, that they just invited, it was a board meeting with some county people, but they included us in that meeting, in that planning meeting. So I thought that was very good for us. The next one is civic engagement. And civic engagement covers a lot of areas: citizenship, crime prevention, safety, disaster preparedness, the needy, the hungry, homelessness, military, veterans. So it can include a lot of things. Last year, what we did, Attorney Hank Vanoy came and spoke to us. He spoke on September 11. How appropriate. Not only was it September 11, but that week is also Constitution Week every year. And so he talked to us about the Constitution. We each got a copy of the Constitution. But then what we did as service was we purchased, at their request, pill organizer containers, you know, put all your medicine in, for the North Carolina Veterans Home in Salisbury. We also donated bedding for 10 veterans who were transferred from Asheville to Salisbury because of the flooding, and they didn't have the linens for 10 more people, so we helped them out there. We also purchased 65 Christmas wreaths for the Salisbury National Cemetery as part of the Wreaths Across America program. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that program, but a wreath for every grave, and I have a picture of that later on. And we've actually participated in Wreaths Across America for several years now. Now, this CSP is still working on plans for their new year, so I can't tell you which area they're going to address, but I'm sure it'll be, they've got a lot of choices. The next one is education and libraries. I'm doing them in alphabetical order here. Education and libraries promote schools and other educational institutions, libraries, literacy, and the love for reading. We also interview and select a high school senior for our Moxville Women's Club scholarship, and that's a $2,000 scholarship. And I'm going to have a picture later on of the young lady who got the scholarship this year. Last year, we heard from April Sapp, who is the education coordinator at Cognition. And she brought a bunch of educational toys for us to play with, so we would have a feel for what goes on at Cognition, because that's a relatively new program in Davie County. This year, our education and library CSP are planning to maintain the Free Little Library, which is in Rich Park. They also are planning to have a children's book drive, and they have talked to, we are going to partner with Cornatzer Elementary School to help with either reading buddies or lunch buddies. They're trying to decide how we can be most helpful, but that's our plan for this year. The environment CSP encourages us to become stewards of the earth by working to preserve our world's resources, to protect our wildlife and domesticated animals, to live sustainably, and my favorite too, to beautify our communities and enjoy nature. So that's their goals. Last year, we learned about Three Rivers Land Trust and their work to save some areas of farmland in 15 counties in the Piedmont and Sandhills. You know, they're not out there, I mean, they want to be wise in their preservation, but to preserve some of those areas. So this year, this committee's got lots of things they want to do. Among other things, they hope to involve members in the Souls to Souls program. You might have heard Souls for Souls, and it's repurposing your old worn-out shoes and then sending them to other countries. They want to learn about environmental issues that relate to public health, and they've already been talking to somebody about doing that. They want to share information about the North Carolina Mountain to Sea Trail with us, 1,175 miles of trail that goes from the Great Smoky Mountains to the Outer Banks. And they also want to establish another pollinator garden in Davie County. We're going to have some pollinator gardens. Health and wellness addresses three key areas: nutrition, disease prevention, and then physical and emotional care. Last year, we heard from Julie Langford, who is at Cancer Services, with a program entitled Fighting Cancer with a Fork. We made a contribution to Cancer Services there. This year, the Health and Wellness CSP plans to address maternal health. So they have talked to Gwen Jones from Davie Pregnancy Care Center, and she's going to come and speak to us. And actually, the CSPs are going, the chairs of that group are going to meet Thursday at the center to see how we can be of assistance. But we are planning a diaper drive as one of our goals. I was told that the last time Moxville Women's Club had a diaper drive, they collected 5,000 diapers. So that's a heck of a lot of diapers, so we'll see what we can do. But Moxville Women's Club also has some at-large programs that we participate in. They're not necessarily tied to one particular CSP. The first one is bingo. The first Monday of every month, we play bingo at Davie Nursing and Rehab, and I can assure you, every participant is a winner, because we play until you win. And candy, moon pies, and other unhealthy snacks are the favorite prizes, I can just tell you. Last year, we had a very informative program from Kim Marshall, who is at Crossnor Communities for Children in Winston-Salem. You probably know it as the Children's Home, but now they have renamed themselves, because they're not the only Crossnor. And after that, we filled 60 Halloween treat bags for the children that are at Crossnor. This year, that was last year, this year, we have Brent Harp from Davie Senior Services coming, and I know he's already spoken to you folks, but he's coming to our September meeting, and he's going to talk about all of their programs and how Moxville Women's Club can volunteer. And as Linda shared with you, we do support Storehouse for Jesus, especially at Christmas time, but we also have a number of members who individually volunteer at Storehouse, and we encourage that. Next slide. Just to give you some pictures and tell you about some of the things that we have done in the past. If you see the first picture at the top with the Coca-Cola, every year in April, we celebrate our history and our accomplishments. And on that particular year, if you could read it, it says, "We took a trip on Federation Airlines." And we traveled around and saw lots of things that had happened, and really got a good view of a lot of the accomplishments of Moxville Women's Club. The picture at the bottom, we purchased the flagpoles at Davie High School, and there is a plaque, in this picture, it's sitting up as an insert, but it's actually down in the pavement, that says those flagpoles were donated by Moxville Women's Club. We also bought a number of band uniforms when the band was really struggling, we have a new school, and awful band uniforms. Moxville Women's Club bought several band uniforms to help them out. You see the picture of the Wreaths Across America from Salisbury. The bottom picture right below that is us filling the Christmas bags for senior ladies at Storehouse. They are ladies who are 65 and older, who have asked for assistance at Christmas time. So they still are getting help from Storehouse with clothes or whatever else they need, but we give them just a special little feel-good bag. The picture at the top is Jane Simpson awarding Mia Claire, who was our high school recipient. And yeah, she was very grateful and very sweet girl, very, very sweet girl. I don't know if any of you know her, but she is very special. The picture right below that, one of the things that we did was we donated quilts and stuffed animals for Victory Junction, and there, they're kind of working on one of them. So that was our project one year. In that list, it also talks about, there's Fairmont Adoption, and Linda's already talked about that, the Free Little Library, I've already mentioned that. Domestic violence, we filled purses with toiletries and other items for women at the Davie Center for Violence Prevention, which was previously called Davie Domestic Violence. They like their new name better, so it's Davie Center for Violence Prevention. And then, you can see, there's another picture of us with the Christmas bags. Mrs. Brandon, actually, in that picture. And then the bottom picture, we donated a substantial amount of money to take care, we purchased a room, essentially, at the Dragonfly House. And they gave us a plaque on the door that says that that room was provided by Moxville Women's Club. We have participated in Christmas in the Town of Bermuda Run. We participated in the Bermuda Run Flag Plaza. We painted the interior of a Habitat House in Moxville and decorated a little girl's room. And those are just some of the examples of things that we've done. I didn't want to, my husband, I told a few of you, my husband said brevity was my friend, so I don't want to list all the things. So how do we fund our Moxville Women's Club activities? Our members are charged $75 a year to be a member. But $50 of that money goes to the state federation for those big projects that Linda mentioned some of. So we lose 50, and then the district takes another five of that per person. So we are only left with $20 per member. So our members will then contribute some things individually, like when we did the Halloween treat bags, everybody just brought a bag of candy, or you know, a bag of gum or whatever, and we fill those bags. When we do the Christmas bags, our ladies provide some of those things for the bags too, because they enjoy the act of actually giving. But our biggest income, we depend on our fundraisers. And we have a fundraiser, a major fundraiser every other year. Next slide. Okay, so we have found that our best fundraisers are a speaker, a luncheon, a speaker, and a silent auction. Bermuda Run Country Club has been very good to allow us to use their facilities and given us at least a fair price for that. On the far right, you see Elizabeth Hudson. She is the editor-in-chief of our state magazine, and she came and spoke. In the middle, Adrian Wood is an educator who's also well-known for her blog, which is, her blog is called Tales of an Educated Debutante. And that focuses on autism, because she was a very nice society person, and then she had this child, and she learned a lot, and now she tries to help a lot of other people who all face having children with special needs. And then this past spring, we had Kristy Woodson Harvey, who's a New York bestselling author, to talk about her latest book, which is called A Happier Life, and we all got copies of that book. Those three ladies all have something very much in common that I wanted to share with you. They all have very strong North Carolina ties. Elizabeth Hudson over here grew up in Farmer, which is right outside of Ashville. She lives in Greensboro now, and she travels the state for the magazine. Adrian Wood in the middle was born in Rocky Mount, but she attended high school at Salem Academy in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And then she went on to Meredith and UNC Chapel Hill, and she lives in Edenton now. And then Kristy Woodson Harvey, she was born in Salisbury, grew up in Salisbury, but she spent her summers in Davie County. Now she resides in Beaufort. But they all have a strong North Carolina connection. But they all have a strong North Carolina connection. So Moxville Women's Club is excited about our opportunities, next slide, is very excited about our opportunities to learn and support some great causes. We would love to see our organization grow as we continue with our work. Of course, all ladies are invited to attend. That leaves out some of you guys. So Moxville Women's Club generally meets on the second Wednesday of the month at 10:00 at Bermuda Run Country Club, and it's my understanding that we have met at Bermuda Run Country Club for a long time. In 1962, they met at the Tanglewood Manor House because there was nowhere in Davie County that they could meet. We meet September through May on the second Wednesday, except for December and January. And in December, we have to shift to the first Wednesday because we've got to get those Christmas bags ready. And then we have to shift around a little bit in January because Bermuda Run Country Club has closed the first week in January, and it kind of skews a lot of things. And one other thing I just want to mention in closing, you know, we really thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you this evening about Moxville Women's Club. But there's one thing I want to make sure that you realize. It is called Moxville Women's Club, but we have ladies from all over the county and some ladies outside of the county. It got started as Moxville Women's Club because that was the place to be in 1962. But now, we are dispersed throughout the county, and I think that's kind of a misnomer. Like, when I was first invited to join Moxville Women's Club, I went, "I don't live in Moxville. I live in Advance." But I have learned that that is not, Moxville Women's Club is for everyone. We certainly appreciate the chance to share a little information about what we consider a very vital organization in Davie County. And we are open to questions.
Questions?
And I do have some brochures that I can give out, too. But I don't, we'll just make those available.
Any questions?
I have no questions, but thanks for sharing. It was amazing what the guys are doing. Thank you.
I will say one thing. With COVID, we got a little off. You know, we couldn't have our fundraiser that year. We, we just, it took us a while to get back in the swing of things, of doing, and I hope that we are going to do. Our last fundraiser, just to give you a little, I mean, we raised about $17,000 in that fundraiser, $13,000 directly, and then we had several thousand that were donations that were just given to us for that cause.
Could I interject there? That was a net.
That was.
That wasn't gross. That was.
That was net. We cleared. We made $30,000, but we had expenses, 30 something thousand. We also have, just to give you a little more information, we do have a fund at Davie Foundation that we use to help pay for our scholarship. That is very good, and we do have, and we had some savings, but now we're ready to spend those savings.
Very good, very good.
Any questions?
Well, I have a question. Everyone in the audience, even in the dais, raise your hand if you're a part of the Moxville Women's Club.
There you go.
Okay. So, thank you.
There's about 40 members right now.
So thank you for coming tonight, and both of you, and sharing with us on video for others to consume later what you do. Thank you, ladies, for coming here tonight and supporting them and presenting. I will tell you that I am absolutely humbled by all the things that you identified, that you folks do. That is absolutely incredible, and each and every one of you should be tremendously proud of that work. That is incredible scope and span of what you're involved in across our county, and how proud can we all be that such an organization exists? So happy you were able to come tonight and present to us.
And it's all female. Oh, yeah.
Do you say that in a way that I?
But, you know, because it started because females were excluded, so.
I would like to say that I am so proud of all of you guys as a past president, and I have been in the club for over 20 years. It is by far my favorite volunteer activities. I love the women in this club, and I encourage you, I'm looking at a couple of you out there, I encourage you to come to our meetings and join us because we would love to have you be a part of our, our club. Donna, Linda, you did a great job tonight.
Thank you very much. Please pass along to the broader organization our thanks and appreciation for you sharing what you shared tonight and all that you do very much. Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item number eight, citizens' comments. Do we have anyone signed up tonight?
We have one.
Okay. All right. Proposed action items. Item A, Clemmons, Bermuda Run Annexation Agreement. Mr. Medwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is the, a request to call for a public hearing on the annexation agreement that is before you on September 9, 2025, which will be your next regular council meeting. You're asked to consider the renewal and extension of the 2002 annexation agreement that existed between the Village of Clemmons and the Town of Bermuda Run that has just recently expired in July. These annexation agreements between towns are formal agreements outlining how municipalities will handle growth at or near their share of boundaries, and they are authorized under General Statute 168-58.24 and 168-58.21, and often used to avoid disputes and things of that nature. So you have a copy of the annexation map that is proposed, and basically, it's pretty simple, that we won't cross over the Yakon River. Clemmons will not cross over the river into Bermuda Run. Pretty simple. You have a copy of the 2002 agreement, as well as the proposed 2025 agreement that will run similarly to the 2002 for 20 years in that. So the action for you tonight, Mr. Mayor and council, is to set that public hearing for September 9, 2025.
Thank you. Any questions?
One question. Is Yakon River the county line? Is that?
That is correct.
The Yakon River is the county line?
I assume Clemmons will be considering this at about the same time we are.
At their September meeting as well.
Very good.
So I have coffee with both Mayor Rogers of Clemmons, as well as Mayor Horn of Lewisville and Mayor Clemmons, and I have talked about the potential of us putting up some sort of a toll gate on 158. We're still debating who gets to collect the toll. This may actually be a way for us to move that conversation forward. Stay tuned for that second part. That is not part of the vote tonight, just so everyone's clear. No other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the proposed annexation agreement with the Town, with Village of Clemmons.
Second.
For the public hearing, set the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I move that we set the public hearing for the September 9.
Second.
I apologize.
All those approve? Five oh. Thank you, council. Item 9B, resolution designating finance officers and official depositories for the Town of Bermuda Run. Mr. Medwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight, you have Resolution 2025-006. This is, as you had mentioned, a resolution designating who the official depositories, the finance officer, a deputy finance officer for the Town of Bermuda Run. In a nutshell, what this really does, as many of you know, for a town of our size, we consistently try to meet some of these internal controls that the state requires and our auditor wants us to see. What we are asking is, outside of the town manager as the designated financial officer, the mayor as another designee for check signing purposes, is to add one additional individual to that, just in case there's a situation where one or, one of us are out of town and we cannot sign that. But this also is a requirement that, as we name our official financial institution, which is the Bank of OZK, they have to have this resolution as part of their process to put on their side as to whom can sign this check. We did this similarly, I guess, back last October, November, I believe. So this just further adds to those internal controls. We have someone writing, preparing the checks, we have two people signing checks. It's just those checks and balances that we, as an organization, need to continue to further strengthen that for auditing purposes and for the LGC.
Yeah, and really, the term that I think of is, it's called segregation of duties. It's more difficult to do in smaller organizations, which is why I'm signing checks, Andrew signing checks. It's just another way, from an audit standpoint, to have those additional layer of controls to ensure there's integrity in our processes. Any questions for Mr. Medwell?
Just from my education, is there, is there a particular dollar amount, high or low, that requires any type of additional signing authority? So.
Dora prepares checks, Andrew signs those checks, then I sign after those, and I maintain a separate log of the checks that I sign.
Very good.
Creating that sort of process of controls.
Good, thank you.
Hearing no other questions, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
That's Mr. Tedder. All those approve? Show of hands. Three, five oh. Thank you, council. Item number 9C, resolution to adopt the Northeast Piedmont Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Medwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight, you have Resolution 2025-007. As you mentioned, this is a resolution to adopt the, a previously adopted plan of the Northern Piedmont Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan was originally developed in 2014, adopted by this town council, again, in 2020. It was re-adopted. It's a five-year cycle for that. You see several of the action items in there that are part of that mitigation plan. You see Davie County is included in that as well. The reason for that, Davie County provides many of our emergency services, they administer the floodplain administration for the town, so that's the reason why Davie County is included in that as well. Davie County will probably go through the same process of adopting this plan through their process. But what this really does is just, we have to have these kind of plans in place if, if there is some type of disaster here that allows us to be able to show that, yes, we have these documents in place to allow us to apply for whatever type of disaster relief funds that are available either at the state level or the federal level. So this resolution is for you for adoption, for this re-adoption of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Medwell?
One for me. On P2, on the 100-year floodplain, how much of our town is in the 100-year floodplain? Is there a lot or not?
So those were adopted probably, I think they were in 2008, if I'm not mistaken. And they went to a, what they call a LiDAR mapping system. Very accurate as compared to how the old firm maps used to be. So it's a small percentage, but as, as development occurs, more impervious surfaces, things like that, it's not so much the riverine-type flooding that you're starting to experience. It's the smaller creeks, the stormwater-type stuff, is probably really more of a risk of flooding than so much, than as compared to the 100-year flood, right? Much of the 100-year flood has been pretty well documented about where those levels are. If you've been here for a while, you kind of know, well, the watermark was here on this tree, right? So, but it's not so much, I can't remember the total acreage amount that's in there, but it's not as much as anything.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think one of the other things that I'd read where they had started to move away from referencing 100-year floods and going to a percentage-based model. So, for example, instead of it being a 100-year flood, it's a 1% flood. The idea being that people in their minds think 100-year flood means what? Every 100 years. So we had one last year, I'm good for 99 more. It doesn't work that way. It's essentially a 50-year flood would be a 2%. And so they're trying to get the terminology transitioned to make it more logical for people to understand. To your question, you can also go to, North Carolina has flood map information, GIS flood map. You can go to our county flood map. You can pick on it, identify the area that you're looking at, and you can see, for example, where the 50-year, 100-year, et cetera, where it goes up through some parts of the golf course, up towards, let's call it Rotunda, up towards Warwick Place. It shows it. You can see the floodplains based on volume of flooding. So in fact, areas where homes are built, I think there's, you know, an expectation that people would know that and acquire insurance if need be, et cetera. So, great question.
Andrew, another question. This is a coordinated Northern Piedmont type of mitigation plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there, is there a sort, any kind of standing bodies, such as representatives from the various counties, that have any particular, I suppose they have a meeting or anything, but they are, is there someone that coordinates that type of effort?
So for Davie County, Mr. Cameron Webb, who came and presented to you, he is leading those efforts for, from the county side, on our side, and I think they have meetings, you know, fairly monthly in regards to.
So they're sort of a preparedness type of approach there?
That is correct. That's great.
And that actually cascades beyond Davie County and emergency services and just goes broader and broader to the state level. So it's a, that's sort of normal hierarchy you would expect to have, so that you have the ability to have that sort of command and control if there were a multi-county kind of event. We heard Cameron talk about that in terms of his relationship with others that do those kinds of emergency management kinds of systems as well. Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Guthrie. Those, show of hands? Five oh. Thank you, council. All right, the heavy lifting's over. Now we'll move over to our town manager report and comments.
Mr. Mayor, pretty brief, just, we'll let you know that Town Hall will, our interior spaces will be painted sometime this week. I think this is probably the first time that we've touched the wall since we moved in. So a long time waiting to do that, so hopefully.
You go with school bus yellow, is that what you chose?
I'll let you choose the color, just like you chose colors at your house.
Okay.
Andrew, have you considered consulting with the Moxville Greater Davie County Women's Club?
That is correct. That is correct. So you may see some activity going on if you come by to that. So outside of that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, well, mine will not be brief, so you've been duly warned. All right, so first of all, thank you to everyone who attended tonight. Again, thank you to the, our presenters and to the ladies tonight to come and support of Moxville Women's Club. Women's Club, I keep saying Women's Club, Women's Club. Apologies for that. Want to recognize and thank Deputy Hobson, as always, our community officer. Appreciate him for all that he does in support of the Davie County Sheriff's Office. I get a lot of positive feedback on Deputy Hobson, and so thank you again for all that you do for us. I want to shout out to our vice chair, Commissioner Finney, back and back. She joined me for a ribbon cutting at lunch today, and I always appreciate her attendance and all the support she gives this town and the county more broadly. So I did have the opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting over at Thai Destiny. Those of you, raise your hand, everyone who's been to Thai Destiny and had something from Thai Destiny. Well done. I see some hands that are not up. We'll need to have those next month. I'll be checking back to make sure. But no, it's a wonderful, wonderful restaurant, right, located right next to Lowe's Foods. Just an outstanding family that runs that restaurant. They celebrated their one-year anniversary, and many of us wore pink. For those of you that may not know, I quizzed the audience when I spoke and asked, well, how many people in the room watch golf and watch Tiger Woods? Hands were raised. I said, well, what color does Tiger wear on Sunday? The answer is red. And I asked the crowd, well, why was, why does Tiger wear red on Sunday? Well, the answer is Tiger's mother comes from Thailand. And in Thailand, each day of the week has a color associated to that day. of the week has a color associated to that day of the week. Today is Tuesday, so for that event, many of us wore pink, because Tuesday is pink for, in Thailand. So it was a great way to learn, educate, and so I reminded folks, not only do you have wonderful food, but it's an opportunity to understand and get connected with another culture. So I encourage all of you, if you've not visited Thai Destiny, wonderful family, great food, show them the support as a business that you can, because that means going there, acquiring their services or their foods, et cetera, that helps sustain them and that makes sure that they are here for a very long time. Absolutely wonderful family. So it was a great opportunity, and Benita, thank you again for joining me for that. Huge thank you to the Bermuda Run Garden Club for their work last month in planting a pollinator garden. I've heard pollinator garden now more times in the last couple of weeks than I have in my entire lifetime. So, just sharing that the pollinator garden is now the new buzzwords, so we'll be quizzed on that each and every month. But it is, it was wonderful, it's a great, great set of plantings over there, and just another way for us to augment the Blue Heron Trail. So thank you again for the wonderful work.
Your honor, did you really intend to say that was a buzzword?
Yes. Did you get that?
I caught it.
See, I throw a few in from time to time, just to see if you're listening or not. I also want to thank the five candidates who filed for the three town council seats in our November municipal elections, Mr. Rod Guthrie, Dylan Hines, Carson Jernigan, John Jones, and Marty Wilson. As was done two years ago, there will be three candidate forums. There will be one at Kinderton Village, one at Bermuda Run Country Club, and one at Bermuda Village. So stay tuned for those announcements coming out. The town is not coordinating those, those are being coordinated. Thank you to Gary LeBlanc, who's part of our elections board, but he is coordinating that, and so we'll get that information out through the town once Gary gets all that information finalized. But hopefully you have an opportunity to go out, meet the candidates, it's a great way to get engaged, involved in the election process. This Friday, August 15, we have another Food Truck Friday here on the town green. We'll have music, food trucks, vendors, I've got music twice, apparently we'll have a lot of music, and kids' activities. The event runs from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Please come out, and whether it's food truck, or get a lawn chair and listen to music, but come out and, and join us for a fun evening on the green. For our town council meeting next month, I am coordinating two presentations. That's right, folks, two presentations for the price of one. So we have Scott Wallaston from NC Fusion, I've invited him back to speak, give us an update on the Truist Sports Park and all the things that are happening in the soccer fields, as well as Trevor Lemon from the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission. I've invited him to come, educate us on how we can coexist with the little critters that live among us, what be they, the skunks and the rabbits and the raccoons and the snakes and all the other bats as well, and geese. But help us understand and ideas for how we can coexist. They were here before we were, just for the record, but to figure out how we can, things that we can, as homeowners do, to live together, and if we can't, what are the rules around that? So he'll come and speak to us on, in September. Excuse me, and I've also had speakers for October, November as well, teed up, so I enjoy having different organizations. I have Davie Women's Auxiliary coming in November, so trying to tee up multitudes of different organizations to come speak and educate all of us on what's happening in and around our county and the great, great good work that's going on. With that, I will turn it over to council for any comments. Just again, appreciate you ladies being here to share with us the good work you're doing. Thank you very much for taking the time to do that. Keep it up.
I'd like to also say thank you again, ladies. Love you all. And I want to add that I noticed my next to Thai Destiny, there, there are a couple of shops, and one is going, undergoing a major expansion. So they'll be taking two of the stores in there. Revive Nail Bar is going to double, double their size, which is wonderful for, for business. I mean, it just shows that there's a lot of business going on in a new, another beauty salon and eyelash place. Sage &amp; Ember has gone in there, and they're working on their place now. So it will be a beauty strip, ladies.
I'm pushing for a barber shop. Not, so far it's not worked out very well, but any other?
I'm good.
Good. All right.
One, one thing about Thai Destiny that you may not know, it's a great family that owns that, but they have invested coming to Bermuda Run, because they were in Winston-Salem, downtown Winston-Salem, for many, many, many years, and he made a decision to close that down and invest and come out here. So let's make sure he gets his investment back and we patronize his business. The food's great, service is great, he does a great job in his family.
Well said. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Second.
Second. Show of hands.
That was fast.
Five oh. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned.